Appreciate it and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody. Melanie additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, I have two. I have an MOU for a school resource officer position and a landfill reorganization.
All right. No deletions?
None.
Or any additions or deletions?
None for me.
Very good. All right, so 901, is there any public comment or anything other than what's on the agenda? So if there's any public comment on just general business or bring some forward, we'd welcome at this time. I know most people are here for the 9:30, the 2:20 North Hill Street property discussion. That would be at that time is whenever we will discuss that.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Chair Winters, I am Lola Wharton. I'm a retired head dresser, business consultant, and a concerned voter and educator. In 1996, my father started driving me crazy ranting about how corrupt government agencies are. And because of him, I'm educating others today. Here was what I was thinking. What protective is 70-year-old, sixth grade educated law track driver known? I set out to prove him wrong because I just wanted him to be quiet. I was tired of hearing the constant complaining and berating over government. So was the rest of the family. I will never forget to smile on my dad's face that day when I told him I was going to prove him wrong. So I said, "Okay daddy, tell me where to start." Daddy told me to start with the Council on Foreign Relations, the Builder Burger Group, and follow the money. So I did, and my life has not been the same since. I found Supreme Court and lower court rulings and a wealth of other documents. In 1998, my research led me to a seminar in Cancun. And there I found 1,900 other people of like mind wanting more information and knowledge into the complexities of the IRS, the Internal Revenue, statutory laws, federal regulations, federal register, Office of Management and Budget, the IRN regulations and their implementing statutes, United States statutes at large, court of competent jurisdiction, sovereignty, which is the real reason why I'm here today, citizenship, rights guaranteed under the Constitution, acts, public laws, and neoclassus. In 2000, I found a document written by Chuck Consis called the Liability Report, which contained extensive research on Supreme Court rulings. I became a member of this group and became a research assistant and spent countless hours researching all the Supreme Court cases listed in this liability report. I was able to prove by these US Supreme Court cases that I do not have a personal or legal obligation by living from Dax. In 2003, I also found evidence that a securities fraud is being misapplied against the people, Americans, landowners, and because of this ignorance of the clerk reporter and the sheriff, these public servants have a duty and obligation to know the laws and their proper applications. Yet they choose to react based on what they're told instead of educating themselves. In 2006, our group, the Lawman Ad Hoc Steering Committee, spent seven months compiling evidence into a 126-page book, which was presented on August 8, 2007, to our county commissioners. Under Title 18, Section 4, Miss Prison of Felony, our committee had an obligation to tell someone in authority, which was our county commissioners at the time, or be guilty of misprisonment of felony ourselves. In 2007, our Liberators 2004 Committee presented to our Douglas County Oregon commissioners the notice of lien fraud that was being perpetrated in the clerk's index by our county clerk. Our then-commissioner Killman asked the IRS agents involved with our four meetings at that time what law the county would be breaking for the IRS to sue the county. The agents' reply was, and I quote, "We would be walking on eggshells if we told you that." And I have the video if you guys want to watch it with their exact words. Still, those commissioners, nor none that followed, have done anything to stop the fraud against the public that serves. In 2012, another grievous ignorance was uncovered and has been almost the total destruction of this county alone. And it's the jurisdiction and land use issue. A solution was presented with facts and successes in evidence to support the successes, and still no action was taken to correct the problem, which is what brings me here today, Chairman Winters, commissioners. Jurisdiction is your duty, three-year old of office, to protect the individuals of Lake County and their God-given right to their own labor. A right we have allowed the government to attach a fee to and turn that right into a privilege through licensing. This is a crime, Chair Winters, and since ignorance is no excuse, I ask you and this commission to act expeditiously to rectify this crime. There are Supreme Court cases still in good standing to support this claim. Each individual in this county has a right guaranteed by both constitutions under the Fourth Amendment, I think, to freedom of choice and to be safe in their homes, their personal property to freedom of speech, which is the First Amendment, to redress, which is why I am here today. And your obligation as a sworn public servant is to protect our rights from a tyrannical governor who has clearly overstepped her authority and her henchmen. I'm asking that you Chair Winters and you commissioners to write a resolution under health, safety, and welfare and our governor's misuse and abuse of power that clearly states that no enforcement of such unlawful orders that are not laws, they're orders, will be forthcoming from this county. This is an individual choice, which is why I don't wear a mask, which cannot be predicated with proper authority without which at this time does not exist. She doesn't have the authority to do what she's done. Please abide by your constitutional authority and your oath and stand for our rights under the law, commissioners. Write that resolution because it's your obligation under your sworn oath to do this and it's the righteous moral and just thing to do. Please send a clear message to Governor Brown and her de facto agencies that their tyranny will not be tolerated in Lake County any longer. So I have, if I may approach, I can give it to your young woman over here, a letter that I wrote to the United States Department of Justice Attorney General and the American Civil Liberties Union, asking them to investigate Brown's unlawful declaration of a state of emergency without evidence. And I'm available for consultation or to have any questions of any kind. May I?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Our administrators.
They make copies and give them to us.
Thank you.
So can we ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
What was your name again?
Lola Wharton.
And so I'm assuming you have the court case numbers that say that the state of Oregon doesn't have jurisdiction over the counties?
What I have is documented evidence. Oh, probably about 25, 30 cases where the court explained, the courts had explained what jurisdiction is. This county is sovereign over the United States government and Oregon. You have the right to reject any laws that are not constitutional or laws that are going to be damaging to your citizens. That's your sovereign right. That's what the Constitution say. And yes, I do have them. I can put them together and get them to you if you'd like.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Any other public comments?
Just a question. I'm Judy Manias. A question, isn't there a home rule law in Oregon under the Constitution that also goes along with what she said? That counties have the right to home rule, public health, and I believe some other things were under that. I looked it up the other day.
There is. You can hit home rule status, but from what I can tell, the state still has jurisdiction over you in that case. But, you know, if any evidence proving otherwise, I'm more than happy to listen to it.
Okay, I did some research and I'll put it together.
I can give you some more answers on that. In the 1930s, there was a big issue, 1920s, '30s, there was a big case about taking home rule away from the counties. And so back in the 1950, I think it was 1957, they amended the Constitution to allow all counties to build their own charters for home rule. So in the 1970s, I think the legislature met, I think it was 1973, the legislature met, and they allowed all counties to be treated as if they were home rule. To this day, there are only nine counties in the state of Oregon that have adopted home rule charters.
And we can.
Yes, we could.
By the vote of the people.
By the vote of the people. And not by this board alone.
Yeah. So there's home rule counties, there's boards, we're a board of commissioners. And there's counties that have a county judge, which is a commissioner judge. So any of those are charters or a board of commissioners. For it to go to home rule or to have a judge is by the vote of the people.
Okay, so that would have to be under a petition, correct? To get it on the ballot?
Judy, I can't answer exactly the process for initiative to be brought forward, but I believe there has to be an initiative brought forward. Home rule counties usually, the commissioners, a lot of them have five commissioners and they'll represent different parts of the county. So to bring the initiative forward, I can't answer that off the top of my head.
There are two types of home rule counties. There are statutory and constitutional home rule counties. There are nine constitutional home rule counties in the state right now. Statutory is what we would fall under, being that we never adopted a charter after the 1953.
But it would be by an initiative petition?
It would have to come from the people or be voted on by the people, I should say, to my understanding.
But to get it on ballot, it would have to be an initiative petition, right? Unless you've decided to put it on?
Unless we put it on there.
Yes.
To my understanding.
Any other public comment? All right, so we're going to move right on into our agenda until we get to our 9:30 item. So the first thing we have under other business, MOU for the SRO position. We have, is there any questions on it or are you here on other things?
I'm here for the 9:30.
I thought that would be it. Okay, so we have the Lake County Sheriff's Office, MOU with the Town of Lakeview for an SRO position. It's been signed by the sheriff. We'd like to bring it into the official record of the county. So it's on record. Legal counsel reviewed it. And I think we just need to have a motion to accept MOU as signed.
I'll make a motion to... So are we going to use the resolution from the town, the resolution number from the town?
That was what they, that's what they signed. We have the actual MOU that the sheriff has signed. It's a memorandum of understanding for law enforcement services for school resource officers with Lake County Sheriff's Office and the Town of Lakeview.
So I'll make a motion to accept the law enforcement services, SRO, school resource officer between Lake County Sheriff's Office and the Town of Lakeview.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the MOU between the sheriff's office and the Town of Lakeview. Further discussion?
Just really good work on this. Appreciate the town, the sheriff working together to get this taken care of. It was good. I think it'll be great to have.
Yeah, and so just for the record, this was a grant the town put in for. This will be for District 7. This is not county-wide. The grant was specifically written by the town, just for clarification. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Landfill reorganization. Nikki was going to come in for this. Buddy, would you run down? Grab Nikki. Did we get the EOCCO then?
Yeah.
Right. I'll let you take the lead on that.
So the MOU with EOCCO, they're doing this in every county. There was a little bit of confusion, partly on my part, as I thought that this was something originally for the hospital, as it did not specifically say for the county commissioners. But once you delve into the language, it really is a county concern. I went over it with Jim Bailey. We drafted some additional language that we wanted to include. You will find that on page six if you would like to see the additional language that we inserted. Jim Bailey and I, we had a piece in there for if the county should not agree to any of the proposed amendments that is presented to comply with the radiation requirements, and the county may withdraw within 30 days of any regular period. Prior to that language, there was no language in there giving the county an out of the MOU. But I believe this is a good thing. There's a lot of requirements that have come down from the state on the EOCCO and all the CCOs. And I think this is, this'll help as just an understanding between us and the EOCCO as they further provide care and services to our public.
Sir? For the public, do you want to explain what is EOCCO?
So the EOCCO oversees healthcare basically and our OHP for the entirety of Eastern Oregon. They are the largest CCO in the state, going back... Oregon does something a little bit different than other states where... I want to make sure I don't get this wrong, but basically, the way our healthcare works and services provided to our population is through the CCOs itself. It's, they have certain metrics that the local LCACs and RCACs find as far as needs within the community that they have to provide. And if they don't meet certain metrics, the government starts by taking a portion of the pie out and some of the money that is used for distribution and for healthcare services. And then if, but if they meet the metrics of service that they set, we get to set, if they meet those, then those dollars do come to us. EOCCO has had an incredible record of providing services to all of Eastern Oregon. They have such a huge district ranging all the way from here to Columbia River, where most CCOs are much smaller in geographical size. And they work quite well to us with us. I sit on the EOCCO board and the only elected official on that board and the only commissioner. And I've got a chance to just kind of learn a little bit about what they do and how they provide services and advocate for Lake County. And I think this MOU will kind of help out a lot, so. This is just old band business because, well, the governor changed some of the rules and she created a CCO 2.0. There were additional state regulations or requirements that came down with that on the EOCCO. I don't think anyone was really particularly happy about it. But we were able to be part of that discussion and get things moving in a better direction than I think where they were originally headed. And so I think EOCCO carries a lot of weight and very good advocates for us in making sure that care is provided.
Very good. Would entertain a motion.
I would entertain a motion that we accept the MOU of understanding with EOCCO in Lake County.
Can you make the motion?
Sorry, I wouldn't make that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to enter into the MOU with EOCCO memorandum of understanding. Any further discussion?
Just one, the authorizing signature on that. It can be anyone that we get. The EOCCO, I want to make sure that they did not specify who would actually be putting their signature on this. As they didn't want to tell county government as to who would be the person to sign that. Because some counties operate differently. They would have their administrator, county administrator. And you can see there's a number of counties that have the same memorandum of understanding with the CCO.
Yeah, I'm fine. It can either be you or it can be the chair.
I'm fine with the chair.
Okay.
Just that's normal procedure for us.
That's what we normally do, yeah.
But just one to point that out. It's not designated the chair. But it's, we left that open. So maybe designate someone who isn't even an elected official actually could sign that according to an attorney, which I prefer to just keep it as the elected body.
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Nikki?
Hi.
Do you can come up to the front here?
Please, why not Buddy?
Buddy's coming too. So we're going to, landfill reorganization, this is something that we've been stuff over the management and operation of landfill. It was about October, so it's ever-moving, ever-changing. I'm going to preface this with compliment to Buddy. He's our landfill supervisor. Our landfill is probably in as good a shape as I've seen it in years. Very proactive, very thinking of being conservative and keeping operations running to the most efficient way we can. And so as he worked with me and Jay, Nikki, and individual commissioners, proposals come forward. And so Nikki, you want to go over that just a little bit? We have two different things. We need to look at the reorganization. And we also need to, if we agree to that, accept job descriptions.
Okay, so you all provided what the information was then? Do we have that there? The proposal would be that the superintendent move to a half-time, 20 hours per week in a supervisory capacity still, superintendent managing more of the details and then to have a supervisor operator onsite that performs more of the onsite management and supervision of the employees, oversees the working aspects of the landfill, leaving time for the superintendent to focus more on some of the underlying operational things that mean lots, that are important. It also, in doing so, reduces the financial budget by 34, approximately $34,000. So it's a savings to move in that direction.
That's the $34,000?
It does allow for an increase to whoever is in that operational supervision. That wage would go up, but the amount paid to the superintendent for the half-time is basically cut in half. So that's a savings that you're seeing.
But we're not actually increasing any wages at the moment. We're just providing a stipend for that.
Correct.
For the other position.
Correct, just a stipend. A stipend of $6,000 a year.
Which is about $500 a month.
I just missed almost exactly. Questions to Nikki? I know that everybody's individually talked with that department and with Buddy. Buddy, do you have anything to add?
No.
So being the liaison, I'm going to make the motion, go for it. I'm going to make a motion to accept the reorganization of the landfill inclusive of the two job descriptions. And the reorganization will come with a savings of $34,215. It will have a stipend of $500 a month going to the landfill supervisor operator.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion?
Just really well done. Appreciate all the work you guys did on this. Looks good.
All in favor? Chair votes aye, motion carries. We just cut your wage, Buddy.
Over the landfill.
Thank you for being creative. Appreciate it very much.
Having a victim, the next one with me?
The next one with you is, which one?
The sum agreement between the, we'll bring it between the town and...
The MOU?
Done. We did that already.
Oh, thanks.
Done.
Thank you Nikki for that though.
Just making sure. I assumed it was going to, but just making sure.
Perfect.
So do we have time for this common service privilege agreement? Who's the assessment? Hank? Who's the lead on that?
That's Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Bailey?
That's, that's on the...
That's the class action.
Yeah.
Okay. He won't be on till 10 o'clock. All right, so we have a little bit more time here.
Give the minutes.
We got the minutes, 8:14 of 2020.
Chair, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from 8:40, 2020.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of 8:40, 2020. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Got about four minutes before our timed item. I might give a little bit of an update on liaison updates, the fair ground is out there. The last, excuse me, two, somebody for itself and primarily the roundup. We got all the water out and done. There's still some cleanup to do yet. One box go around the back road to Rice. There's 16 hydrants all the way out to the RV, or the ATV, I'm sorry, not RV, ATV out there all the way back and out into the field. So now there's good pressure, there's good water. There's even a place where they're available to hook in to each line to fill up some water trucks during the roundup. It's quite contested, so kudos go out to people who brought their equipment, people who worked hard on that. And it's quite a project. We still have a little bit more to do, but it's long days, hard work. Update on the fair roundup. The roundup is going to have about four different segments out there to follow the governor's guidelines that come out. So it's thinking out there the best we can. The Fair Board is supportive. The roundup is putting this on. Extension Service, early on, June 30th, announced that there would be everything virtual animals. They would not allow the animals or the kids onsite. A little disappointing to the Fair Board, but it wasn't our decision, so that was made. So they're going to do a virtual sale and virtual auction. And so that has been challenging to some of the 4H groups. And it's challenging for north against south, Lakeview not against, but trying to keep that relationship going there. So fair's going to be different. It's going to be no concert, no disruption. There would be both those were canceled. But you can get rodeo tickets. It'll be segmented, four different segments there. It'll allow 250 people per segment. You have to have your own ingress and regress, own restaurants and everything. So kudos to the Roundup Association for working so hard to keep some of our things going on here. So one minute, anybody want to kill one minute?
No, we can move forward. I think everyone's here that wanted to be here.
Well, actually, that clocks a minute off. So it's 9:30. So, it's nine thirty, we're going to, we had a request to have a discussion on two twenty North L Street property. Way back when the landfill was, was ask if we would hold that one off to go, for the town to go through the process to see a project there, which is the Lakeview Lockers project, would make it through the process and for that piece of property to be used for parking. That was done. There's been quite a bit of interest, lightly, on the whole project there. There've been requests, several letters, thank you everybody that's sending letters, some form letters, a lot of very direct letters on that. So, first off, I want to have Darwin sort of give an overview and plot our options, possible options are at this point.
Yeah, so, thanks commissioner, the board commissioners received a request from Climate Housing Authority. My email chain goes back to March, printed those just to have them here. And a letter that was dated March twenty fifth of this year to, and in that letter states, you know, some of the reasons for the request.
Would you mind either getting up there or getting on the microphone so everybody can hear you?
I don't want to sit up here, since I more see you when people may ask me questions.
He likes to have us back to the wall.
My mic right here.
There you go, perfect.
Alright, so, just, hopefully you can all hear me a lot better now. So, Climate Housing Authority made a request on March twenty fifth, prior to our landfill auction of the property at two twenty North L. And they stated in their letter the reasons for the request, which was, and I'm just reading in part, which was, Climate Housing Authority is partnering with Ross, McGarva, and the Lake District Hospital to bring in permanent supportive housing project to Lakeview. Requested, property is across the street from the former Lakeview Lockers, which is slated to be renovated into apartments and the transfer property would be turned into parking for tenants and guests. So, to go on to other things in the letter, but that was ultimately the reason for the request. So then, the board, you know, got a copy of this letter and it was determined that we would hold off this property from the sale so that we could entertain this request and discuss it further later down the road. Those discussions haven't finalized any decision by the board. Just to summarize, although that property was taken from the auction that was held in the first week in June, actually June first, the property is still in ownership of the county. And as board commissioners, you guys can determine what you want to do with the property. ORS language I've got with me, we could go over that further. I was unable to get with Jim Bailey to go over some of the ORS language, but this is definitely in your guys' right to donate for closure property that you have to housing authorities or any nonprofit that is involved in those community services that are outlined in ORS one seventy-one point three three zero subsection two, which is for low income housing, social services or childcare services, which are also defined by the order of mail.
But we did not make that transfer.
Yeah, the transfer hasn't happened, it's still, and that's why I think you're opening up for comments on this to entertain. But let me, let me give you one quick summary as well, is that, so, the property was pulled, you know, right there in March, or soon thereafter, prior to the auction. My notice was already prepared through the paper, so it was still on the notice, which was probably in my air. I should have probably revised that and removed it. However, I left it on there just because this wasn't final. And so, knowing that there would still be, if you decided not to sell it, or not to, sorry, donate it, I would still be required to notice it four consecutive weeks prior to the auction. So that, that still happened, but then I announced at the auction that it was removed. At the auction, there were multiple people who were interested. And that was still before people knew what McGarva's was planning on doing. As a town councilor, I'll put that on real quick, I didn't know about what the full intent was really until later. Even the same permanent housing. My prior discussion before this letter was written with McGarva's was only about it being low income housing. And so, I wasn't aware of what their intent for this property is now until the town council meeting I attended that was first at the town hall back in, I believe, early July and then a second maybe two weeks later. That's where I, I'm kind of in a tough spot. As a town councilor with the ongoing, obviously, rezon application, so I want to be careful where I speak. And when it comes to that, I'll obviously disclose this discussion that we're having now. But as landfill manager, yes, you have every right to sell it that way, and, or not. I mean, you're not obligated to fulfill a request like this, but you may, if you feel it is in the public's best interest. And that's, that's key to any decision you make. But with the ORS again states that for foreclosure properties, if it's in the best interest to exchange it, donate, give, you can do that.
So, there was email exchange and everything with Climate Housing Authority. And there was, they were aware that it was coming off landfill with the possibility of donating if, if the project made through the process. Okay, so that, that becomes possibly a legal question that you have to talk to Jim Bailey of. If that discussion, if we can change from that discussion, which I believe we probably can, but we need to have that clarified with legal counsel.
Jim Bailey won't be on until then, correct?
Yeah, I guess you could take public comment and ask him that specifically then. Yeah, no decision, I mean, it wasn't that you pulled it and said, we will be, no matter what, donating this. But it, but it was definitely pulled for the intent to look at. It's just the option we're going to take with that property.
So this is a done deal, right?
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
We, none of us have talked to legal counsel about it yet, Wayne, we have to. I had a little trouble hearing you. Sorry about that. So at this point, once, or she's otherwise, I'm going to have public comment, public testimony. Okay, so, come on up, state your name for Melanie, to get the record straight.
I don't know what I'm going to say now.
Can I stand over here like you? You're in one.
My name is Denise Lindsay. I live at one one eight North L Street, Lakeview, Oregon. I'm here today in reference to the property at two twenty North L Street. It's my understanding it's to be offered to Climate Housing. We, the citizens of Lake County, deserve full disclosures of proposed use of this property. This property will become a non-taxable loss to the county. It will remain residential, we have that answer, parking lot. If it's not for residential use, Climate Housing Authority takes possession. How does it justify their reasoning that their purpose in taking Lake Lockers, the lockers, is because there's no residential property available? They're going to take a residential property and turn it into a parking lot? Makes no sense to me. If there's no residential properties available, how does it justify taking a residential property and turning it into a parking lot? My final reason is when we as an American hand over what could and should be privately owned land to a state entity, we give away a piece of our freedom. Once something is state owned, it becomes theirs to do with as they please and a burden on the taxpayer. That's my statement, thank you.
Who would like to do a question?
I agree with her. I would, I would just like to say something on this. I hadn't planned to say anything, but when I found out, I'm Judy Maniavas. I spent twenty years or more working with the population that you're talking about that would be in the lockers. And of course, this would be a subpart of the homeless area that you. Until such time, as the county has the type of programs necessary to deal with homeless people, it is, you're really getting the cart before the horse. And you're asking for more people to come in without the services available to take care of them. And I have a real concern, and once you give this property over to the parking lot, the next will follow. And I really have that concern. It's not that I don't want a place for the homeless. It's just that you're doing them a terrible disservice if you bring in more homeless without the programs to take care of them.
Anybody else?
Looks like I'm here, but that's not what I said. I feel like I'm beating a dead horse because I've spoken at the town council meetings also, but I wanted to say first off that because this is during the daytime, there are a lot of people that are in dissent of having this property be donated, that are not able to be here at this time. And it's reflected in both the letters that we received and the letters that the town council has received regarding this. And I took the petition around to my neighborhood, because, oh, my name's Heather Faversaw, and I'm at the, you know, four more seconds right now.
Thank you.
So I took the petition around our neighborhood and ran into a lady who only lives here six months out of the year with her husband, who was formerly on, she was employed in Tillamook County on the homeless housing. And she said that it is a fallacy to think that these people will not be transported over here if there is housing for them, because it was not uncommon practice for them to take people even as much as two counties over, not two cities over, but two counties over, if they found out that there was a bed or a place for them. And so when Eric Fornson announced that homeless people don't come to Lake County to be homeless, that that's actually a very naive outlook on it. And I had, just answered so many of my questions with Darwin talking. Oh, I just had a concern that there has been an Americans disability attorney that has now become involved with this situation of the town council. And I've looked through paperwork and cannot find where homelessness is actually a disability. Homeless people may have some disabilities, but by calling this a homeless housing, then that doesn't, for me, doesn't fall under disability. Yes, they may have those, but this isn't a drug rehab center where they can then say, the people here have a disability because they have drug addiction. They're calling it a homeless housing, and to me, that doesn't fall under the disability act, but I'm not an attorney, I'm just thinking that. And then I also wanted to know when it was presented to you guys? Was it presented at one point to be a dog park at all? Because this letter that I just heard for the first time says parking, but somewhere in the middle it got convoluted and changed around. Okay, and then also, as presented to you guys, was it originally that there was, you had no interest in the number of units that were going to be there because the park you were donating was strictly to be support to that housing?
So I can answer that question because I was more involved in this process than the other two were. Originally, I believe the units were pretty, there was a pretty low number of units that were proposed. At some point or another, that doubled. I cannot tell you exactly when that was, honestly. Things kind of blended together, and I missed a number of the meetings for the group of folks that were discussing this and working on the project. I kind of took a step back in September, actually of last year, from the project and from attending the meetings. And I only made a handful of them after that. So, but I do not remember at what point it increased the number of units. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Right, so the main other thought is that as elected officials that are supposed to represent our community, and I would hope that you will reconsider donating this property as you will find that there are many of your voter base that you represent that are in dissent of this coming into our neighborhood.
Anybody else?
Yes. My name is Langrisheer. And when I read the letter from the, from the town, they've stated that the McGarvas were applying, first of all, for a loan change or multifamily dwelling. I had no problem with that, but then all of this evolved into a homeless, homeless shelter. Now, I want to throw on record that contrary to popular belief, I'm not against homeless people. I spent fifteen years as a pastor on the side of the hot three ninety-five, and I'm taking care of some homeless people and destitute people. My heart goes out to them.
Thank you for that.
I would, I, I think a shelter for homeless people is a grand thing, but I think it ought to be considered where you put it. I personally have property next door to that proposed homeless shelter where I have three great grandchildren, a little girl about this tall now. I'm very, I'm very careful about where I let these kids go. And to move these kind of people, the kind of homeless people that we're talking about, you don't know these people, they're not from Lake County. This, this is not a county-wide issue, these people coming in here. And we ought to take, I believe that as commissioners, you guys want to take the best interests of the people of the county. That's what you're elected to do. I'm not just trying to come down on you, but it's time that the people of Lake County were represented. There is people in this town that were very interested in buying that property to, as residential property. I believe it would be a miscarriage of justice for you to give that to Climate Housing Authority for a parking lot and a dog park. Now, this has come down to the mitigating here, and like I said before, you know, this is my backyard. It's your backyard. It's all, this concerns all of us here. And whatever happens there is going to affect the rest of the town, believe me. You know, Lake County is a very unique place, as you very well know. All of us have been here, lived here, born and raised here. But we can see that there's a change going on here, and I think we ought to stand against the change. I'm for homeless people, but there is other property better suited for a homeless shelter than the Lakeview Lockers. Number one, I, you know, I don't know where you're going to put all these people. Eighteen units there is, I've been a builder a long time, and I don't see eighteen units there. When you take that property and the two twenty L Street, lived here all my life and don't know the street. But across over there where that, where that old house is, when you take that, make it a parking lot and a dog park, that's, that is an insult to the people of that community, that neighborhood. There's good people, Denise lives a block from it. Billy and Susie Gerber live two doors down. You know, you're, you're looking, you are affecting a lot of people by this decision. Now, Climate Housing Authority, I believe they have the best interests of people at, at heart also. But, you know, after careful consideration, I believe that there's better property around to build homeless shelters. You should consider what you're doing by making this decision. This and hasn't, if it's not already been made, then you're under no legal obligation to make it. You have an obligation to the people of Lake County. Number one, that's how come you were elected. Alright? Yes, I'm right. I voted for you because you said you would, you would, you would take things to God and you would consider, you would prudfully consider your decision. I ask you to do that now. And I know you will, Mark, and I know you will also, Brad. But this is very dear to me. We're seeing, we're seeing our life just eroding away and we're just sitting calmly by and let it happen. This is wrong. It should not be so. So I guess I'm just beating it over the head, but I'll quit for now. So I guess I'm just beating it over the head, but I'll quit for now, but you know, here's one, one last parting shot here. We went to the city, uh, planning commission, and they turned it down. Under some coaxing, I might add.
That, that was accounted for.
But they made the right decision. Now, as I understand it, your decision of whether to donate this property to Clamath Housing was going to be based on what, if that was, if the zoning, if the zone change was approached, is that right?
That's correct.
It was turned down by, by the city planning commission. It's got one more step to go through, and that's the town council.
So Wayne, I don't know their whole appeal process on that, but the one thing that's very obvious, and especially with your testimony, is the intent, whenever we set this to the side, the intent was different than what it is today.
Yes.
And we're hearing that loud and clear. Whenever we were approached through Darwin to us, things have changed. You heard Commissioner Williams say, things have changed. What we have to do is-
I didn't hear that, but I'll, I'm, I'm fine.
But, but we, we have to follow a process too.
I understand.
But I just need to let you know, your testimony, hit the nail on the head for me, is that the intent is different today than what the intent was-
Thank you so much for considering that, because, you know, this affects, this is not just about, uh, you know, some, again, I'm not against homeless people, but these people are faceless people right now. We don't know them. I know my three great-grandkids. They live right next door. Where you live, it's been about twelve feet of that place. These are the faces that come up before me in the nighttime, when I think about that. Uh, you know, if, this, and they're not the only ones. This, this is a residential neighborhood. This, this thing does not belong there. There's no way that you, with a clear conscience, that you can look at this and say, this is a good place for this homeless shelter. It's not. And I urge you to not donate that to those folks. Look around, this is big county. There's other property. I, I thank you for your patience for hearing me.
Thank you.
But, you know, I was born and raised here. I've lived here for seventy-three years. Now, my wife was going to buy me a T-shirt that said, I survived the sixties twice. Well, I've seen things come and go, and this, this shouldn't have even come. Thank you.
Thank you for testing, Wayne.
Chair.
Good day.
Absolutely. So, let's go back a ways, because when, I guess when the first years, when you guys came to me a few weeks ago, I started doing some research with our assistant, administrative assistant on, we went back to the meetings, because I didn't remember ever saying we were going to donate. We discussed it. But at the time, discussion was for supportive housing. And the supportive housing, to me, meant something like the commons, where you're giving somebody a hand up and not a handout. Handouts do not work, in my opinion, and, but handups do. And, um, you know, look at Portland, look at Seattle, where they keep giving handouts to homeless people. San Francisco, where they have to wash the feces off the streets every morning. Um, when you give a handout, instead of, I think everybody here agrees, we need a hand, give people a handout. There's not one of us here that hasn't had one. There's a story back in the day about when, um, Jack Piddleton worked for, um, what's his title? Well, he worked for the unemployment department years ago.
Before that.
And when it first started, this unemployment thing, and he had a guy that came in who had lost his job at the sawmill, and he felt very shameful coming in and getting unemployment. The second time, the guy wasn't so shameful coming in to get his second check. By the third check, the guy come in and said, where's my money? I don't want that to happen here. But I want you guys to understand, we haven't donated that one. We talked about donating it for a supportive housing, and it's morphed into this handout instead of a handup. And all the commissioners, we need to find out legally what we can do about, can we take that back now? Since we haven't made a decision, I don't see how we're binding. But we have to make sure, because I don't want the county to face a lawsuit and then more county money, our money, to spend on. And so, until that time, you know, we have to kind of go through the process. But I, nor any of the other commissioners, have said, yes, we're going to give this property away. We discussed it, and that's it. And you know how, if you gets rolling with stuff, they hear a little thing over here and it blows up over here? We're not your enemies. We're part of your community. And I live down that direction too. And so, do I want a homeless shelter in my community? No. But am I willing to give somebody a hand up in the right circumstances? Damn right. So, that's all I have to say.
Any other testimony?
Yeah. My name is Dan Duster, I live at 1590, uh, we 395th House. We own a property diagonal from the closed, um, facility at, in the lockers. So I, my, my questions are more based on taxation. So I heard, uh, then I didn't notice, so as we donate this, this becomes a piece of property that will not have any tax revenue coming in, is that correct? If, I'm just going to ask a bunch of questions. So if we donated this land for a parking lot, it doesn't make any tax revenue anymore?
So if it goes to a taxing district or another government entity, it is not taxed. Uh, Clamath Housing Authority is a nonprofit, I believe, and I have, I can't answer that question straight up, because we haven't got into final negotiations or anything, because we just set it aside with the potential for it to become a parking lot. So off the top of my head, I believe Clamath Housing is, I don't know if they qualify under no property tax.
Okay. Um, then the next question would be the proposed lockers renovation, that property, what's its renovation, what taxation scenario does it fall into?
I- It depends on the ownership.
Yeah, yeah, I-
But that's not within our-
Yeah, I, I just-
That is not within our-
I don't know, but we could talk to Dave Knowles, the assessor, and find out. There may be some things, Dan, I'm not sure about, on, on, whenever you're talking homeless housing and everything, there may be some tactics and things. I can't answer that question.
So, so I guess that's to be discussed and resolved, but it's nice to let everybody know that we may be taking two properties that are paying taxes in our county, and now they will be paying taxes in our county. Then the next, uh, question is, there was, um, several, uh, people that were interested in purchasing the property, you know, I, I understand we, you haven't donated it yet, but, um, if you do donate it, if you're donating a piece of property that there's no interest in, that basically is a county burden, that's one scenario, regardless of what you're donating it for. Obviously, there's opposition to this project. But if you're donating a piece of property that has value and interest, you're basically, you know, not only maybe not getting any money coming in for two properties that were paying taxes, now, now you're-
I want to stop you there, so the intent, whenever we done this, was to better the community, because the intent was that this was going to be, as Mark says-
Right.
-a handup, not a handout.
Right.
So the intent was, is if it was offered tax rules, our community would be better served by being able to have this housing there. So that was the initial thing, whenever it was brought to me, and probably each other, commissioner individually, was for us to be proactive in a way to help our community on supportive housing. That has changed, so now we're talking different scenarios now. So I'd want to, for you to throw us into a box of today, that whenever, back, whenever we set this aside, the intent was quite different.
Well, pardon my, just move forward though. If it is donated and there were people that were interested in it, essentially, let's, let's just pick a number, let's say somebody's willing to pay twenty thousand dollars for the property. You essentially took twenty thousand dollars out of the people's Lakeview's pockets to get to the sympathy, because that money would have committed to the county coffers to be used for the collective. So, um, I just, if it was a piece of property that, that would be one scenario, there was obviously people that had interest in that, so, um, uh, and, and I agree, I am all for a handup, um, but I think everybody's in agreement, handouts don't work. We've seen it before, look at these cities, you were, pointed out a, a lot of nice examples of how, how well it does not work. So, um, and, and the description for this project has changed, and it continues to morph. And at what point will we, the public, actually know what this project actually is going to be, so that we can, we can actually figure out if we want it or not? Right now, we don't want it, because we don't even know what it is, and it keeps changing, and the descriptions keep changing. And, um, as, I think it was Wayne said, faceless people, we don't even know the people coming in here. These are not people coming from our county, they're coming from somewhere else. So, so all these factors that make the people opposed to, uh, the project, because we don't really know that it's a handup. Because as described, the further we go into this, it seems like a lot more like a handout. Okay, one other, one other comment about taxation. If, if this property proceeds as forward and ends up being a facility of a handout, ongoing lifetime, unending, the property values in this neighborhood are going to go down. And I, and everyone else who owns properties are going to come to the county and say, I use my taxes to invest it. So we're going to further decrease the tax base in an already depleted, um, current kind of multi-year tax, uh, uh, scenario with the COVID thing and businesses being closed, revenues are down to an all-time low. Now, we're moving forward even more. But I will be at the tax office saying, my property's not worth as much. I can't rent it for as much, I can't sell it for as much, because it's right across the street from this place. So there's, so most of my comments and questions are oriented for taxation, which is the basis of how we pay for the good things in our county. So I think that I would just like you guys to consider all of those things very highly, strictly from a financial standpoint, okay? Um, if, if this ends up being the, the homeless shelter and it's ongoing handout, property values are going to go down. That, that's a given. I know we're not a big city and we can't, you know, say that it's going to instantly turn it into a bad part of the town, but it's going to certainly turn it into a less desirable part of town. And I know a lot about property, and that means your property goes down when you live in a less desirable part of town. And we will be going to the tax, tax people and saying, this is not, this is not what this house is worth anymore. So that's another tax implication. So anyway, revenue, it's, it's going to affect the revenue coming in for our county. Okay? So, thank you.
Thank you. Two points of clarification, if I may.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
This lady's been waiting patiently.
Yes, all of us have been really wanting to talk.
That's okay.
I just wanted to just follow up real quick on, uh, the parking lot, actually. Um, originally, because I want to make sure you guys have some back history on this, when that originally came forward to be utilized as a parking lot, it was for the purpose of keeping people from parking on the street. And they were looking for a property that might be able to be utilized for that purpose. And the county just happened to have this at the time. And when we took, and the second part of that is, when we took this off the list, Darwin, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was no interest in the property at that time, when we made the decision to just hold it, hold back.
So-
But there had been, we had also put out a notice yet, correct?
Yeah, so, so I'm glad you asked, because I did want to clarify that as well. So we get these properties-
You're, 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 Mike.
Yes. So I can talk to you. So, uh, so, the deed, in which we got the properties deeded to us, um, in 2019 included, this property was deeded in October of last year. So the board, um, order that I prepared for you to bring things to auction doesn't happen usually until February. So between October and, you know, I mean, there was, there were a couple people that talked to me, however, regardless of the one, and there was one, I never wrote it down, but I said, you know, it's, it's on our list.
I talked to you.
And, um, so it was, it was discussed, but, you know, until the order is, uh, made, there's no real opportunity to give people a whole lot of details on, on, you know, the sale, the price, all those things. So it was not well advertised, it's not advertised in the paper until later. And I, we don't even like to talk about it in our, our office with folks until that order's been made, because the, things get old, um, for various reasons. Um, yeah, there, there's, you know, there's-
I just wanted to follow up on that, because I was unaware that there was interest in the property at the time we had made the decision.
Right, yeah. It didn't really show up until, I mean, the majority of it didn't show up until the order was made.
Okay.
Because the order originally did include, because the order happened before the March letter.
Okay. Did you have anything else?
No, that was it, Loma.
Yeah. Thank you for the opening.
I want you commissioners, um, to think about something here. We're already paying for this Clamath housing as taxpayers, because where's Clamath housing if there are money? Do any of you know?
I don't. So some other states, some other federal, I believe, and it's-
We're looking at, most of it is probably federal, okay? There are seventy-two, at my last count, there are seventy-two federal agencies. And at Article One, Section Eight, Clause Seventeen, that is Congress's authority, ports, magazines, arsenals, dockyards, and other lethal buildings. So the people of Clamath, I mean, of Lake County are paying for Clamath Housing Authority and every other single of, of housing authority that there is here. So we're paying for it already. What would be fair, I believe, to the people of Lake County or to the people of the town of Lakeview, is turn it into a dog park. We all have dogs. Let us pay for taking care of our dogs, not the homeless. If you want to give the homeless a hem, a handup, get them off of drugs, give them a job, give them counseling, but don't bring them here to live in our town, please. Thank you.
Other testimony?
My name's Grady Vandenberg, I live at 244 North Elk. Um, I'll try to keep it clear and not discuss this project as a whole, I'm against the location of the project. And I want, I want to, I think about your guys' decision here to, to potentially donate the property across the street as, as one decision that could have a lot of other unintended decisions. It may encourage, uh, that project, uh, decrease property values, like others have said, and I can think of several of my neighbors who would probably move out of town or leave town. Now, that may be a little extreme, but I think there's a good chance that could happen. And that could mean you have three more houses that are going to be on the auction block, that are run down. There's people here that are paying taxes, that are working on those property values. Because I live to the west of the north, I talked to several people who are interested in that property. They wanted to fix it up, they saw an opportunity. And I think this town needs more of that right now, to bolster the economy, the housing market, and to make people want to live in town again. Make it a street where you can drive through and all the houses are pretty nice and well-kept, not like the rest of the streets where several of them are and a few aren't. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, Grady.
Thank you.
It's Marcy Wade, I'm 105 Burke Street, but we actually own the house right across the street from the lockers. I just want to go on right here that we are not foregoing there at all. We have renters in there that have been in there since we bought it with a child. I don't, most homeless people have mental health issues, alcohol and drug issues, it is- It is part of Lakeview, which I think we're, we need to get back to how Lakeview used to be. Because I think that's part of the problem is we are giving too much in Lakeview to people that aren't contributing to Lakeview. And so I just wanted to go on record and say that I agree with Dan and Wayne and everybody else that spoke today, because I haven't made it to any of them yet, so.
Thank you, Marcy.
My name is Ed Henry. I live at twelve thirty eight North Third Street. About a block away from the parking lot, relatively. And I realize it hasn't been donated, and I am against to donate. Not only would that bring more traffic into our area, the people who live on both sides, across the street, they would have more traffic all hours of day and night. I'm already seeing more traffic, foot traffic. I've never seen these people before. And I think in anticipation of this project going forward, we're getting more traffic, out-of-town traffic. I don't know where these people are coming from. But I would just implore you not to donate the property. Thank you.
I have a question. My name is Renee Struble. I live at one one five North Est Street. We own some property on Industry as well, just a block or two from that. And when you were saying, James, that when Clamath Housing came forward and asked because it was going to need parking, why are we looking at the lockers as this facility and this shelter if it doesn't have appropriate parking anyway? So why would we, you know what I'm saying? Why is that even looked at if it doesn't have the proper parking? That's really my only question for, just on the record. Did that make sense?
Yeah, it did. Very good.
Did you want an answer to that?
Yes, that would be great. I just don't want to be up there.
No, you're fine.
Get me out of the basket.
It's all right. Thank you. I think the original intent of the group was because they, they didn't think that there would possibly be suitable enough parking if you had folks maybe coming over from the hospital, maybe a nurse or something like that needed a place to park. We didn't want to have people parking on the street. It was part of the discussion early on, not having parking on the street. Because there's already enough of that issue. So the idea was, okay, is there maybe a lot that we can convert into public parking? And that was part of the original discussion. And I think, I want to, I want to kind of reiterate that the whole project itself has morphed.
Yeah.
So severely from this time last year to where it is now. And part of that's dependent on a lot of the grants and a lot of the restrictions and requirements that came down from the state to the money that they were working with and how the project was developed. I remember Kristine Albertson and I, and we were really trying to figure out what we could do, where our ability was on the project. And honestly, I, you know, for myself personally, I won't speak for any other person in the group, it moved in a direction that I wasn't necessarily comfortable with it anymore. And it's why I started stepping away back in September. A lot of the things changed as to how we could structure and build the project in comparison to what our original vision was in the early part of last year.
And that is kind of where my question came from. I do see that where, I mean, it, once it morphed into these eighteen beds or whatever for that, there is, even, I don't believe even that would be adequate if you guys were to donate that. I mean, with everything. So I just, why is it even being looked at if it's, it's not a proper spot, I guess, for what is required?
Well, I think that was kind of the idea.
When it's morphed.
The idea was to find a place where there was additional parking.
Exactly.
And of course, there's all sorts of things that come along with that. You need crosswalks. You need different places that are safe for people to cross the street in order to get from the lockers to the parking lot. There's all those different things that needed to be worked out or would need to be worked out with the town planning. And to my knowledge, I don't think they've ever worked that out.
Thank you.
So that was just real initial conversation piece. The county had this lot. Maybe there'd be some potential for utilizing it for parking purposes because we didn't want people parking on the street. And it was identified early on that the lockers property did not have enough room for the parking that might potentially be needed.
Thank you.
Can I ask for clarity on something?
Yes, ma'am.
You've said it's morphed, and that's why you stepped back. Well, I'm, I've been here for years, forty years. I was born here. Six generations. So, you know, I'm, I'm listening to it, it morphed, it morphed. And it all has to do with the grant system. What happens when the grants are gone? Exactly. What happens when there's, they're not going to be a fountain of, here's, here's grants for infinity. It's not an infinity fountain of grants. So the money's going to run out. And some of these projects, as I've done some research, the money runs out and it falls on the burden of the county to continue it or finish it. So when you're talking about money and you're talking about what to do, when you have grants, grants are taxpayer money. They came from our pocket. So that's like taxation without representation right there. But when there's no clarity and you keep moving forward and you keep moving forward, and then you're standing there going, oops, that's not what I intended. That's not what I wanted. We have the ability now to stop and say, we want our residential area to be a residential area. Even President Trump rescinded the Housing Act. I didn't bring the paper. He rescinded it. I'm so shocked. He rescinded it stating that you people that live in residential areas no longer have to fear low-income housing ruining your property values.
And your neighborhood.
And your neighborhood. He rescinded that act recently. And that was his statement for doing so. So I really appreciate it. If you step back and take a good, close look at what their proposed is, using our tax dollars for us to continue this burden.
Something to consider on the tax front too is, as we move forward because of the virus, all tax revenues are going to be down with business closures. So while the funds are available now, a couple of years from now, the tickets are going to be freely. So something I would ask is, and this could probably be driven by commissioners, as you, as the thing continues to morph, one, it would be really nice for the public to have a clearly defined description of where it is today, which I don't know where it is today. And I don't think that's hard. You could just post that. I mean, if it changes, it changes, but keep us updated.
With what effect?
Well, I don't know, like, what, I don't know. Like you said, the project is working.
Point of opinion, hang on. We're not the governing body that will be making the decision if this is allowed or not. Right. This is the town of Lakeview, their planning department and the town of Lakeview. So they're the ones for where you're going with as far as that.
Okay, then I'll go and ask them that. The other thing would be, because I think you pointed out something very, very important. It's going to end up in our laps. So I'm going to go to the town and go, you should proceed forward only if you have a written exit strategy for this thing. Because it's, I don't know, when I buy a piece of real estate, before I buy it, I know what I'm going to do with it to get rid of it. I'm already thinking that. Okay, and I'm sorry, but this project had said like it's going to have a lot of problems. And if they don't go into it with an exit strategy, it's going to be, the exit strategy is going to put on the burden on our community. And so they, they should have a written exit strategy on this thing.
I agree with you a hundred percent. Talk a little bit, I worked on this with Clamath Housing Authority. They were supposed to give what they've done in Clamath County to us. And there has to be, if this fails, what happens to that piece of property? Working exactly what you're talking about. Because you have to plan for what may happen.
Right.
So I can't speak for the town and for their rezoning potential or any of that. But on the piece of possible parking lot, I'd already approached that.
Okay. And who would be the entity that I would go and speak to? Or if we wanted to meet them as a group? Who would be the person or persons?
On the Clamath Housing?
No, no, entail here about talking that they make sure that that's included in any proposal.
Well, it's, the way I understand it is remanded back to the town council. So your town council and their legal would be the ones to talk to.
Have it next time. They'll be meeting next week.
Probably by that time?
I will have to wait until it's settled.
Usually at four.
She just emailed me, it's from six to nine, I think.
I've got your plotter. Is it seven?
That's what she told me. I don't know that much.
It's in the memorial.
Yeah, they're having it here because of the coronavirus.
And it's on the twenty-sixth? Twenty-sixth. One more thing.
I really recommend to talk to some of the councilors individually if you get the opportunity also. I really do.
I have failed to mention one legitimate safety concern. And that is back when it was going to be a dog park in the discussion. We were told that homeless people don't have cars, which is a truth. People live in them all the time. And so we know that's false. But Second Street, that most of the people in here whose property were concerned about it, Second Street, which is not your issue, but of the, it's the town, there's no stop signs. That's already a thoroughfare. And you're going to add eighteen more housing units with the potential of thirty-six vehicles possibly, but.
Are thirty-six people? We're not adding those.
No, 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 no. But they're adding that to this neighborhood. And by having a parking lot to park these cars, there's that much more traffic going to be going on. And I know the neighbors across the street, they have their little kids riding their little bicycles in a circle. And aside from already what Wayne mentioned about the concerns of safety for children and other areas, that in itself raises concern to me.
Very legitimate. I hear what you're saying.
May I say something?
Absolutely.
My name is Rhonda Dial and you all know I live at six ten South First Street. I just wanted to remind everybody that as we were working through this, some untrue things were said, like the sheriff was in support. So he had to show up and say, no, no, I'm not in support of this, and say why. And he had great reasons. But what I really wanted to remind everybody, as we were working through this, and you guys are using the word morph, which is a great word because this is just went all crazy. As we were working through this, the last meeting I went to, we were all told by a lawyer that the McGarvas have hired, that if we didn't do this and we didn't do that, they were going to sue our town. And that was a little shocking to me. I just felt like they were putting a gun to our head and saying, okay, you don't like it, we're going to come at you this way and you're going to do this. And I just, I just don't feel that being pushed into this because they get a disability lawyer is right. Even if there was nobody homeless or whatever, I don't think you guys would be approving an eighteen-unit thing there because of the traffic and the this and the parking and just things that are normal. So if you scale it back to them saying, or whoever saying that this was going to be this, and then all of a sudden it's eighteen units, that right there is enough to like stop this in its tracks and make everybody want to look at it and say, is this healthy for our community? Then all of a sudden, we have the McGarva's lawyer pretty much telling us when we had that big meeting that everybody was at and we were all, you know, everybody was, I was really impressed with how civil everybody was, even though our feelings were, you know, high on this. It felt really terrible the way that that meeting was opened. I felt bad for our town. I felt like we were going to be taken advantage of and ridden roughshod over by some lawyers and some stuff and be made to do things that we're not going to be comfortable with in the future.
We were actually told what we could and could not say before that meeting was.
I was blown away by that, that this happened here. I've seen stuff like that happen in videos in other towns and I'm like, whoa. And then I watched it start happening here and I'm telling you, it scared me. And not many things scare me.
We're losing our liberties and our freedoms.
Thank you.
To special interests.
Thank you. Other testimony?
I want to say one other thing. You're not, we don't consider you enemies. Yet. If I came off that way, I apologize to you. But this is, this is a very emotional thing for me. And, but we don't consider you enemies. We're here, we're here this morning to present our side of this thing. And we understood, at least I did. I understood that this thing had already gone past the decision-making point. And I'm very glad to hear that it hasn't. And, and I want to thank you for, for your time this morning. And once again, we do not consider you enemies. We're all in this thing together. I'm sure that you have the best interest of the county at heart. And we do also. So thank you for your time.
Yes, I agree.
And to everyone, before you take off out of here, you guys are always welcome to come and see any one of us one-on-one at any point in time. We'd love to, love to talk.
Can I make one more point?
Yes, darling, may.
So.
Chair, can you?
You are a friend at this point.
Yeah. At this point. So when this all got started, the letter was received March twenty-fifth. On March twenty-seventh, I wrote an email to the four of you, two commissioners and Melanie. And I had reached out to other housing authority, figure, sorry, public lands, colleagues of mine throughout the state who deal with foreclosure properties. And in that email, I had mentioned, you know, that, that that their requests had been made. And then I said that I had reached out to other housing authorities and my colleagues. Well, anyways, the point I'm trying to get to is that part of the response, and I, again, I know that there's process for this. And I want to point out, one key point of process for this is that in two seventy-one, Y three three zero, it says, we're relinquishing title of property for not left, not needed for public use. And so you guys have that right. We've established that. But when, when you do donate the property, if you were to do that, it would be not for less than twenty years for that public purpose. And, and that it would be, you could reclaim ownership of that property. There's a lot of questions that have been raised and I'm not going to try to get into the decision-making that I assume on the town council as part of needing to make. But regarding parking is an issue that the, that the town council has to look at. But one of the other parts I wanted to point out was that, was this. In Section Five, it says, before any county court or board commissioners may transfer under subsection one of this section, any tax foreclosure lands in which the state or political subdivision has represented delinquent or uncollected taxes, liens, or assessments, the county court or board commissioner shall advertise in a newspaper of general circulation in the county for two consecutive weeks the court's or the board's intention to so transfer the property. So that was one of the things in my email that I had stated that needed to happen. So again, this board has not made a final decision. Two weeks' notice, which include prior to your guys' discussion on if it's one in the public's best interest to do this. And obviously, you would have got to that point with public comment to determine if that was the case or not. And yes, there have been a letter sent from the McGarva's attorney representing them. And as a town council, that was kind of frustrating. Because I don't think anybody should feel forced, and you guys shouldn't feel forced. I, again, I know that that's one of the main issues we're trying to figure out with legal counsel on can we still, you know, maybe pull back from this donation? Again, I will make one call out, which I will make on the record when we, as the town council, discuss this further. These two properties, if it's going to become any kind of housing, they should have been involved in the same reason the application was made. Because if they on themselves cannot be standing alone. This property is actually larger than the McGarva's property on which Lakeview Lockers currently sits. And so renovating that, you know, without this, or parking would really include removing the whole property. So to me, it's inappropriate that they didn't have this accomplished ahead of time and those public meetings happened. And it be fully disclosed what the intent and purpose of it. As it has definitely changed from my original email, it was, I was under the assumption it was for low-income housing. And I say that in my letter on the March twenty-seventh email I sent you. Anyways, there'll be more to come. But again, this process is nowhere near complete because we would have had to advertise the intent and then determine that it was met. But a lot of what's been discussed here needs to be brought up and has been, some of it, most of it, prior with the board commissioner, or so with the town council. But on the twenty-sixth, yes, we'll be meeting again as town council and going over the reasons. and going over the rezon application, which originally was for approval, recommendation for approval from the land commission. And then on remand and the public meeting, which happened downstairs, they changed their decision. And I believe it was not recommended for approval through three-two. But that's, that's a recommendation. The town council ultimately has the, the decision-making authority to allow the rezon. And then a separate application would be filed for the intended use. So, there, there are two different steps there.
Question for you. If, if the board commissioner doesn't donate the land, this thing's dead to water because there's no, no parking over there. Is that right?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, that's.
Not necessarily because they could, they could, once again, warp the project into a smaller amount allowing for parking. But they'd have to allow.
But there's so much process.
Yeah, they'd have to allow for parking for each individual, their, their, you know. So, they would have to really downsize a lot to even remotely come close to the parking lot.
So, if the rezoning is shot down, is that the end of this or is there still more?
So, Darwin, do, can they appeal it on up?
Yeah, that decision to, if the town council board decides to not rezon it, could definitely get appealed. Yeah.
Right, but it would all stay right there if?
No, it would get appealed on to, to, by the state appeal boards, either Luba or, or possibly a certain court.
So, one of the do-gooders up north is gonna make these decisions for us finally anyway, right?
That's where we're at.
Our decision here pertains to the one property that was potentially used for the parking lot. Need a little clarification. I appreciate Darwin bringing that forward. Whenever we set us off to sell, there was no guarantees. Still, there was negotiation between the county and Clamath Housing Authority could be able to make sure it fit. So, none of that had happened. There've been some emails, but none of that had happened. Okay.
The, the board order can be amended at any time. And that was ultimately what you did by pulling it from the auction. And it can be re-amended to add it back on and, and then be sold, of which McGarvas and any person could purchase it at the price that we set.
So, I wanna be perfectly clear. Being there's been the threat of a lawsuit by McGarva's attorney, now we're going to, I believe, the board needs to follow with our attorney. Because once there's a potential lawsuit, we don't wanna be named in that lawsuit if there is one. So, our process, I know everybody would like to have an answer today. But we, we, we have to, we have to get with our attorney and make sure that there's, that we're able to do the decision I think we're looking at. But we have, again, the property is still ours. We have not made the decision to donate that property to anyone.
I have a question.
Yes.
To, to this area. So, you're waiting to make the decision to see if the rezoning takes place?
That was the original.
The original?
The original, and it was hold it off. And if it went through the process and was allowed to be rezoned, then we would talk about the parking lot side of it and go into agreement with Clamath Housing.
And, and the legality, if there's no way they can give you a lawsuit to sue you for saying that you would consider this, could you sell that property before?
We're gonna, we're gonna find out when we talk to our legal counsel.
All right, thank you.
Ultimately, I believe it's going to have to be published, one way or the other.
Yeah.
For at least two consecutive weeks. The law actually requires four, that's gonna be through an auction.
Right, might get into a bidding war, you have the Garvas and somebody else.
Is this gonna come down to whoever's got the biggest attorney? I mean, is that basically what we're looking at here?
Well, honestly, I don't think.
That's what it sounds like to me.
I don't think.
You guys can't make a move and you're under threat from their attorney. So, I mean, this, all they gotta do is just wave, you know, the shadow of a dog never bit anybody. Why don't we stand up to these people?
Well, I, I think, Wayne, I think whenever we have, we haven't had the chance to business with our legal counsel. And we would, if we don't do that, we wouldn't be doing the process.
I, I can never thought of that. I truly can't.
We're gonna do that. You know, as far as who has the biggest lawyer, that's on the lawsuit side. On the process side, we're going through the town, through the processing, every time for testimony, that whole time. And I, I think whenever you have the facts and the findings.
Yes.
That's what you guys really wanna work at. Everybody hears the emotional side. Find the facts and findings. I've heard some of that come out here today. Whether it's about stop signs, or it's about sidewalks, or it's about these other things. Find the facts and findings why it does or does not fit. And that goes a long ways if it gets built on up to Luba or another agency. So, I appreciate everybody's emotions and everything. Whenever it goes before the boards and everything.
If this happens again, just as a suggestion, maybe these, the possible litigation of any decision or even possible promise needs to be looked at prior to even making that. You know, we're holding it back. What does that going to mean if we're dealing with a public entity? Because it looks like after the fact of making a quasi-promise, you might be sued if you don't follow through. So, maybe litigation needs to be the first thing looked at.
So, we will take everything into consideration when we talk.
I mean, I mean, prior if this happens again.
And there, there's, over my years, there's been some things that we said, "Let's dance, let's go for it." Exactly what you're saying. Myself, then Tim, whenever we pulled this off, was much different than Tim today. But.
Yeah.
And I know people get tired of government saying we have to check into it. But we do have to check into it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we, we do. I don't, I don't think any of us could have foreseen what, what transpired between the town, the McGarvas and others. And so, and none of that, it just got, got out of control, honestly. And I don't think any legal counsel would be able to comment on that at the point in which we made the decision to take, to hold back that piece of property. So, now we have a different decision.
I just wanna say, the whole McGarva thing's like a slap on the face. They sell everything out and they're moving to Texas, leaving us with this mess.
So, one, one thing that, a little bit, I followed is that I'm very appreciative from almost everybody. Because everybody acknowledges that we have a problem, homeless and people that need housing. It's just the location doesn't fit.
That's right. And we don't have the services.
So, whenever people are able to at least look at it and say, "We know we have a problem, but we need to address it in the right place," and everything, I, I appreciate that.
It's like, you know, we do have a problem. We need, like, was pointed out, you know, we're giving people a hand up. But, you know, what, what this is doing is putting a mandate on the cancer. You know, it just, it, it's not, it's, it's not gonna work. Somebody's gonna, the McGarva's gonna benefit by getting rid of the property. But they're out of here. They've already put in a change of address. They're gone. This thing is left for us. And I do really appreciate your consideration for this because I know you're in a difficult position here. And you gotta, you gotta check on these things or where you stand legally. But, you know, there comes a time, I, I think, when, when we have to just stand up and say, "This is as far as we're going." And because it is not good for the county and it's not good for the town at all. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Wayne.
I just have a question. I'm new to this. So, what is the, the Garvas?
McGarvas.
McGarva's side. What is, what are they saying as their point of view? Why have they gotten a lawyer?
Because that's not really for us. That's a question for the town.
You can go, if you want the answers to that, though, you can go to town hall. And they have, because I didn't bring them in here, but they have the proposal and everything from start to here, where we are now, there.
Okay, I'm just, are they suing because they want to pull out or not do it? Are they suing to make them have to do it?
That's it.
Okay, that's.
They're, they're going for a zone change. It's a land use. Their business is right in the middle of a residential area.
Yeah, I know where that is.
Okay, so that's, that's what the process they're going through with the town finding, right? Right. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I hope everybody got to be heard. I'm in the building for about five minutes. Right? Absolutely. Take a recess. I believe all we have left is the common interest privilege agreement. We need to get Mr. Bailey online and then we'll have some.
Do you want to call our attorney?
James has it under control there. Then I do know we probably be going into executive session on potential litigation.
He's at his office.
He's at his office? What is his number?
Five, four, one, three, one, seven, nine, thousand.
Three, one, seven, nine, thousand. Just have it in the comments. So, we're, I'm sorry if I didn't announce, we're back in the session at quarter minutes eleven. Maybe I did.
You did.
I did. Okay.
You have reached the law office of Bailey and Yarmo. Due to the coronavirus, all Bailey and Yarmo attorneys and staff are working remotely. However, you will not be under pressure.
Mr. X, we can't remember what longer it's been. Or. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Jim. How are you? Just so you know, we are in session. How, how's the weather up in Bend?
It has been blazing hot for the past four days, but we're gonna get some relief tomorrow, I think. We, we got up to a hundred and two on Saturday.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's up there.
That's up there. Okay, so, we have the common interest privilege agreement to go over. Then anything in open session, then executive session under potential litigation after that. So, let's go ahead and do the common interest privilege agreement. Okay. So, Jim overviewed this. Is there's a suit against, I believe, every county in Oregon. This is to sign on to have representation. Correct?
Uh, yeah, there are two things here. The, you're right, there's a class action lawsuit based on Oregon's foreclosure laws. And every county has been sued. And since all the counties have exactly the same common interest as well as the state, the idea is that we would, as a group, hire one firm that would handle the defense. And there are two things that are part of that. One is agreeing on the, uh, the fee agreement, the engagement letter, which splits the first three hundred and sixty thousand dollars that may be generated or billed by the firm among all of the counties. And so, that everybody's limited to ten thousand dollars if it gets to that, uh, maximum of that. And then if it goes beyond that, there's a tiered structure based on county population. So, that's the fee agreement, basically. Then the other document is the common interest agreement. And this is signed whenever you have multiple parties that have their own representation, which all the counties do, they have their own county council. But you have a common interest and this allows all of the attorneys to talk to each other without waiving attorney-client privilege. So, they can all talk to each other, we all talk to each other, as well as talk to the firm that is engaged by all the counties. So, it's, it's really routine situations like this to do this. And there's no reason not to go forward with it and a lot of reasons to go forward with it. So, that's the explanation.
Okay. When you sent us the language on the tiered approach on the cost-sharing agreement, and I didn't see any issue with it, honestly, I, it's, we'd be on tier three, obviously, and we'd be paying about ten percent of the bill. And now, point of clarification on that. Any amount after the initial three hundred and sixty thousand would be tiered as, in the tier approach. Is the first three hundred and sixty, is added within the tiered approach as well?
No, that's, that's split evenly along the thirty-five, thirty-six counties.
Paying the ten thousand?
Thirty-five. Yes.
Okay. All right, sounds, yeah, okay, that makes sense. All right, just, uh, came in my head. Thank you.
So, with that, would entertain a motion, two different motions. First one would be common interest privilege agreement.
Make a motion to accept the common interest privilege agreement.
Second, motion's been made and seconded to accept the common interest privilege agreement. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Second part is the actual tiered approach.
The cost-sharing agreement?
Yep, the cost-sharing agreement.
Oh. I'll make a motion to accept the cost-sharing agreement.
Second, motion's been made and seconded to accept the cost-sharing agreement. Further discussion? Melanie, this obligates us to pay the ten thousand dollars plus a tiered after that. So, please, you take care of our budgets. Where are we gonna go for those dollars?
Can you go, please?
We have enough there. This, this could be something, could hit contingency at the end of the year, it'll possibly do. Okay, yeah.
Um, just quick, do we need signatures on that agreement? Because currently, there is no space on that cost-sharing agreement. We'll have to get something to be signed on that, correct?
Um, I'll have to talk to Mr. Bailey. This is our department's department.
Okay, Mr. Bailey, do we need to have signatures on this for the cost-sharing agreement?
Yeah, I'm gonna find out exactly how the other counties have done. It looks like they've all signed on electronically and I don't know how they did that. So, it may also be, be simply relaying the truth of creed is sufficient. So, let's just do this. If I need something more on that, I'll talk to Melanie and we'll get it all straight.
Okay, it just wasn't quite clear to me because in the, there, there's a letter from, I think it's Theresa Hutchins or Mr. Carlos, or there's, there's an email there, a letter. And then immediately after that, oh, I'm sorry, that's Susan Shank and Jeffrey Missley. And then it has signature sheets from each county. But at the very back, basically, exhibit A is what I was talking about, the cost-sharing agreement. And I was just wondering if there was signatures needed for that, being that it was separate motions.
Uh, let's see. Oh, no, exhibit A, that's just explaining it to you.
Okay.
You're okay there?
All right, sounds good.
Okay, the other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, anything for, any legal updates for open session?
No, I have one for executive session.
All right, so at five minutes eleven, we'll go. I'm sorry.
Before you do anything, do we need to discuss the, what we talked about today and?
Under potential litigation, yes.
Thank you. It's on ahead.
Yep. So, we'll go into executive session, one nine two point six six zero, is it H?
Yes.
You got it right.